All right, we'll call a meeting of the City Council, order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. All of City Council here tonight. If you'll stand, our Cub Scout Pack 1401 Den 10 is gonna post our colors and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Color Guard four, march. Color Guard present the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard dismissed.
Good job, guys. Those guys are from Sienna, so Maria, they said they've signed up to do it again.
We have their information.
Very good. Thank you. Item three are presentations and recognitions. There are none. Item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five are staff reports. There's no staff reports. Item six is consent agendas or motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Move or approve.
Second. Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule so we can take the report from the Charter Review Commission first and so we can get them down.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Allen Cat made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, Joe, or whoever.
Good evening. And what I'm going to do tonight is I'm just going to go through each recommendation relatively quickly, and if you all have any questions, please feel free to jump in and ask. The first recommendation is, begins on page two of 23, and what this recommendation does is it basically removes certain language, specific references to state law that are in the charter, as well as specific language that is contained in state law that's also in the charter, and provides for a general reference to state law. And what this does is that it allows basically state law to change without having to go back to change the charter. An example of this is Section 6.05 of the Charter. If you'll kind of look at the language that's before you, the language that's in red is language that could potentially be removed, and we would be replacing that type of specific language with general language that just refers to state law. For example, right now, candidates are required to submit their applications for filing for city offices 62 days before an election, or the actual election date, but our charter is a bit outdated and states 45 days. So again, this amendment, or this particular recommendation, would actually just kind of move the city's charter forward so that in case there are ever any additional changes, that our charter kind of provides for that and just affirms to state law. The second recommendation of the Charter Review Commission was to revise the tort liability notification language that's contained in the city's charter. Right now, the charter requires notification of suits against the city to be provided to the city manager, as well as the city secretary. Generally, state law provides for a citation to be provided to the administrative head, or may be provided to the administrative head of the governing body in the city, I'm sorry, of the city itself, and so that would be the city manager. So the first aspect of this recommendation removes the city secretary and just requires that notification of a potential lawsuit is provided to the city manager, and it also changes the time period in which that notice must be provided, from 30 days to six months. State law basically ratifies charter provisions that provide for this sort of notification up to six months. Different cities have different time periods, however, there is, there are some cases that indicate that six months may be a reasonable time period, which is why the commission's recommendation is to go ahead and move the city's notification period to six months. The third recommendation is to remove the duty that's contained in the charter for the mayor to sign official plaits. What's kind of interesting about this issue is that when the Charter Review Commission first considered it, and when staff first reviewed this provision, we saw official plaits as the plaits that the Charter Review Commission actually signs, or that the actual, the head of the Planning and Zoning Commission actually signs. Recently, the city received an application for a plat on behalf of the city itself, and in that sort of situation, the mayor, as the head of the governing body, would be the appropriate person to sign an official plat as the owner, not necessarily as the head of the planning commission, or in that function, but as the owner. So this recommendation is, you know, the mayor could actually sign an official plat on behalf of the city as its owner without the language in the charter, but I just, you know, consider that as you determine whether or not you want to either clarify this language or remove it entirely. The fourth recommendation of the commission is, begins on page 10 of the report, and it basically removes the 10-day requirement that ordinances that impose fines, fees, and penalties be published within, published in newspapers within a 10-day period. So this recommendation just removes that period in which an ordinance, or a caption of such an ordinance, is actually published. The next recommendation of the Charter Review Commission is pretty self-explanatory. It provides for an assistant city manager. That position is currently not provided for in the city charter. The sixth recommendation of the Charter Review Commission attempts to make consistent the appointment and compensation process for assistant city secretaries and assistant city attorneys. It changes, or the recommendation is that the city manager appoint those positions with the concurrence of the respective officers. Just to give you all a little history, and Caroline, feel free to kind of jump in here if you'd like, before, Mary Ann Powell was the first actually in-house city attorney of the city. Before that, she was actually an assistant city attorney to a contract city attorney, which may explain why she, as the assistant city attorney, was reporting to the city manager. Now, we have an in-house city attorney, which you may want to consider when deciding how that appointment process should work, because I think, at least at the time the provision, the existing provision was passed, we, the city had, was under a different kind of makeup and organizational structure. The seventh recommendation of the Charter Review Commission is pretty self-explanatory as well. It simply changes the title of the assistant city secretary to deputy city secretary, just to provide for a change in what that person, that position is being called now. The eighth recommendation of the Charter Review Commission is basically to clean up some of the language in Section 4.06 Personnel, the Personnel section. It removes certain archaic language. For example, it changes the reference to pension to retirement. It also reconciles some inconsistencies that are contained within that section, one of which provides that all city employees should be provided for in the pay plan, but as we all know, there are certain positions that are appointed that are not provided for in the pay plan, and so this recommendation attempts to clarify that and to just make that language consistent. The ninth recommendation, excuse me, begins on page 16, and this recommendation basically adds state law requirements to, that are required for petitions to the city's charter. Now, even without this amendment, the city would of course require that state law provisions are met, and petitions would have to meet the state law requirements. The reason this recommendation is not contained within that first kind of general recommendation is because we're not removing the city's current petition requirements. State law allows the city charter to provide for, or the city, or cities to provide their own petition requirements if they were passed before a certain date, so we're not changing any of those. We just want to add basically those, those state law petition requirements that are provided for outside of the charter. And on the next slide, I just have those specific state law requirements. The next recommendation begins on page 16, and this recommendation has actually been in the 2004 and 2008 Charter Review Commission reports as well, and it's just basically a cleanup of the Tax Administration Division language in the city charter in Section 7, in Article 7. This next recommendation clarifies the membership requirements for the Planning and Zoning Commission. It changes the reference to citizens, to, from citizens to residents, and it also removes the homeownership requirement. There have been, at least there was one situation recently in which a member of the commission did live, or was a renter, and so in that sort of situation, the city, in addition to some other considerations, may not want to include this homeownership requirement within the city charter. And there's also some case law that indicates that it might be problematic, but the Charter Review Commission considered that, as well as the situations that have come up in the past, and determined that that was a recommendation that needed to be made. The next recommendation removes the Planning and Zoning Commission's duty to annually submit recommended capital improvements to the city manager on an annual basis. The 13th recommendation is another cleanup provision, and it basically changes references of, references to the Director of Planning to the Director of Development Services, and it also provides for a more consistent process for the appointment of the Director of Development Services. Currently, the charter provides that the City Council appoints that department head, whereas other department heads are appointed by the city manager with the concurrence of City Council. And so this recommendation attempts to clean that up in order to kind of reconcile that appointment process with the appointment process of other department heads. The next recommendation begins on page 19, and simply allows for the transfer of unencumbered appropriations not later than 60 days after the end of the fiscal year to give staff, to give the city the opportunity to reconcile basically budgets. There may be purchases that are made close to the end of the fiscal year for which funds, you know, may be appropriated, but haven't been appropriated, appropriated before the end of the fiscal year. So this recommendation basically allows those transfers to occur. The last recommendation of the Charter Review Commission was to qualify certain franchise authority language that's contained in the charter. Since the passage of the charter and this language, the cities, or not just the cities, but cities' ability to regulate certain franchises has been limited by state and federal law, and so this amendment simply adds general language such as to the fullest extent authorized by law, so that it's, so that it's clear that the city doesn't have full authority over all charters, which is the current state of the law now. And just to really quickly go over some revisions that were suggested or proposed that were not recommended by the Charter Review Commission. The first, the first such recommendation or proposal was to allow the city manager to appoint, to spend, or remove department heads without the concurrence of council. The Charter Review Commission felt that council concurrence was essential, and so they decided not to, not to recommend that change. The second item was just to institute term limits on the city council. The commission decided that that was not necessary. The third recommend, or not recommendation, but proposal was to add council districts. There was a lot of discussion about this item, or about all of these items actually, but about this one in particular. The commission did discuss, and it should be in your report, including, or possibly including districts upon further annexation of Sienna and other areas into the city. And the last item that was brought up but was not recommended was to move the city's election date from May to November.
So all 15 of these charter amendments will appear on the ballot as individual items if we choose to in May of 2013.
Correct.
If council gives that direction.
I think the first thing we have to do is, I move that we accept the report from the Charter Review Committee.
Yeah.
And at some point, we'll have a discussion about what they recommended to us and then decide what goes on.
I'm just saying, those items that are.
I second it for, for purpose of discussion.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the Charter Review Commission for your dedication to help us to tune up this charter, which is the most, the most important.
Four of them are here. Four of them are here. They need to stand up.
Yeah, please, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and we really appreciate you for doing this. I mean, this is very important.
But I have two question for you.
What I really like about the U.S. Constitution is that, I mean, after 200 years, it's still stand very strong, and it's still very applicable, and there are very minimum change to it compared to other constitution around the world. So what kind of time perspective do you have in mind when you make changes to this amendment? That's number one. And number two, among all the changes that you have made, which one have you found the most difficult to come up with the mutual consensus, and why?
Chairman, I think Chairman Workford is here.
I think, I think Joe mentioned, come on up, Joe mentioned last time, that most of the changes they've made are state changes anyway. They just need to be cleaned up since the last legislative session.
Many, many of the changes are just to change state law, and I think the other changes are just in keeping with the organization changes of the city departments and personnel, and changes in the, such as the, talking about a pension plan as opposed to benefits, those types of things. So I, I'm not sure that I have a favorite, or one was more difficult than the other. I think they're all very important, and I think we just need to make sure that we stay abreast of the law and we're not in conflict. As I did say, last time I presented, some people are gonna say, well gee, all you're doing is saying stay, stay, you're following state law, but the charter doesn't say what state law is, or what your policies and procedures really are, and that's true. But the way we're going right now, we have a lot of things in the charter that aren't appropriate. The city follows state law, and so if you were reading the charter, you would, you would think that you could follow that, but you can't. You have to go back to state law anyway. So I think simply stating we follow state law, and then let, if somebody really wants to delve into it, they can go back to state law and figure out exactly what our policies are.
And how about a time perspective? I mean.
I'm sorry?
The time perspective, how long do you think this, this charter, this constitution will stand? When do we have to change it again?
I think legislature goes back into session in January.
This year.
That's about how long.
Yeah, they'll come up with something else in this section.
Joe, I'm curious, you changed the definition of citizens. What was your rationale behind that?
Well, I think as E. Joyce said, just, you're doing, been on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just think it's appropriate that you, maybe there might be circumstances, when you have someone who isn't a homeowner anymore, but they're really a very good person to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission, the way it was written, you couldn't have that.
And we had that this year.
Right.
We had a member who sold his home, but stayed in the city and was renting, and because of our charter, he was removed.
Right. And I think this just opens it up to, to anyone, I mean, you're still voting on who can, who can be on P&amp;Z.
Exactly.
And this just gives you a little more latitude.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other questions? We've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim White, and a second by Councilman Smith, I think, that's who, right?
So are we gonna have further discussions?
Accept the report, and we've got a lot of work yet to do.
So we are going to have further discussions?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, because as I said, whatever changes we decide is a council that needs to be on the ballot, has to be on the ballot in May of 2013, so between now and May of 2013, we gotta decide. All of them, none of them, whatever it is, so we don't have a choice.
And when was the last time, when was the last time the charter amendments were on the ballot?
I believe it was 1999.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, thank you guys and ladies for serving on that, and for the general public's information, I stated it last time, all the members of our Charter Review Commission have sat where we're sitting today.
Thank God.
And have served, yeah, have served as city council members before, so they understood the charter, and that's why it was so important for us that we take previous council people and use them for a charter review, because you don't have to reinvent the wheel with them. So thank, Joe, thank you for chairing it, and Eunice, and Albert, and Scott, thank you all for, for serving, and Anna works up to us.
Yeah. I mentioned it before, but there was very little participation from the citizens at the meetings that I think you folks had, and I would hope that in the future that people understand how important this document is to the governing of Missouri City, and that we take it seriously, and, you know, that we have better representation by, by the citizens the next time, whenever that might be, so I would hope that we'd get a lot more input.
Be careful what you ask for.
Sort of way to.
Yeah, be careful what you ask for.
It's part of our process, and I think it's incumbent on the citizens to be able to be a part of this process.
Similar to what Councilmember Emory was saying, that all of these meetings were posted.
That is correct.
Had enough, enough time for the public to come up to these meetings as an open meeting and then make their suggestions.
And our communications department also publicized those in accordance with their, their practices, which are quite good at generating public interest. Mayor and council, I did want to direct you to the staff recommendation portion of the memo, if so desired, in addition to receiving the final report. If council does at this time wish to authorize staff to prepare an ordinance ordering a special election on all, any or all of the items referenced in this report, we can receive that at that, this time and start preparing that ordinance. Alternatively, if council wishes to discuss this at another agenda to determine which, if any, of these you would like to send, we will notice it for an upcoming agenda.
I think that's probably what we're all wanting to do. I would assume it is. But you want to discuss it further?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think one is we owe it to the Review Committee to pay a little special attention to the hard work, and I would like to even go back and see some of the minutes where if there may be a cloudy issue there, but overall, yes, the information is good, but we are supposed to accept that report and take that report and determine as a council what's going to go on the ballot, and it's probably gonna be everything that the commission said.
Right.
But that's what we're supposed to do next.
Correct, and those are the two options you can see on that. If the desire is just to avail the self of the one option tonight, that is to only receive that report.
Yeah, I think we receive the report, and we'll take action at a later date.
And I'll be glad to forward those minutes on to council as well.
Okay. There was a motion and a second, and I think we voted all those in favor. Motion carries. All right, thank you, and again, thanks to the commission. All right, we'll go back to the regular agenda, and item seven on the regular agenda is a public hearing, 7A is a zoning public hearing.
7A1, an ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas granting a specific use permit authorizing the use of a 9.47 acre tract of land in the city of Missouri City as a specific use places of assembly, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use. Amending zoning district map, the city of Missouri City is adopted by ordinance number 081-1, adopted on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Good evening.
Yes.
This is a request by Holy Family Church, which I'm sure everyone is fully aware of. They've been at their location and in this community for going on 100 years, and so ahead of that 100-year celebration, they do plan to do some renovations to the campus, and those renovations will expand their existing facility. I think, no, we might have a site plan in just a little bit, just to show you. I do just want to share just some of the background with this. The Holy Family site per zoning is currently zoned LC3 for commercial uses. Obviously, at going on 100 years, they predate the city zoning regulations, so they are considered a non-conforming use, and as such, thank you, Maria, and this is an aerial of their location off of 90, for anyone who's not familiar with their campus. This is the campus as it exists today, and I know you can't really see all of the details of it, but it consists of the church sanctuary, and it's connected by what they call their educational building.
Classroom.
Classroom, classroom facilities. In the future, in various phases, they plan to add additional parking, additional structures to the campus. They have no set timeframe for when that will occur, but this phase one, ahead of the 100-year celebration, they do plan to modernize the existing sanctuary facility, adding restrooms and bringing it into conformance with certain building codes, also adding a new entry for, from their parking lot for the educational facility. Staff is recommending, and P&amp;Z has forwarded a positive recommendation for the church to acquire a specific use permit for a place of assembly to bring the church into conformance with current zoning regulations.
May I move to that?
Second. And there are members of Holy Family who are here.
There are.
You are?
Yes.
Stand up, so we can recognize you. Looky there, see there? I know none of you have been there 100 years, but.
One of them have, one of them.
Well, yeah, the guy in the back row's been there most of 100 years, but anyway.
But they will be, man.
Yeah. Anyway, there was a motion by council, by Mayor Pro Tim White, and a second by Councilman Allen Cat. This is.
This is Milbrae.
Yeah, it's two readings. All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. This is church tonight, I think. Item 7A2.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 7, excluding a 3.40 acre tract of land from PD Plan Development District Number 7, describing said 3.40 acres of land, changing the zoning classification of 1.07 acres of land excluded from PD Plan Development District Number 7 to PD Plan Development District, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within PD Plan Development District, changing the zoning classification of 2.33 acres of land excluded from PD Plan Development District Number 7 to PD Plan Development District, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within PD Plan Development District, describing the remaining 7.10 acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within PD Plan Development District Number 7, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 081-1 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Mayor and council, let me start by explaining so we have a better grasp on this. The first of, there's three separate ordinances that are gonna come before you in succession here. The first ordinance relates to the exclusion of a 3.4 acre tract from the current Plan Development District Number 7, which allows for storage uses and is contained, or contains the Uncle Bob Storage Site. The severance of the 3.4 acre tract of land from Plan Development District 7 will facilitate future development of the severed tracts. The first ordinance, like I said, will remove that land and reclassify it as two separate Plan Development Districts. So now you'll have the existing PD 7, and then two other Plan Development Districts carved out of this, this parent body. The, the applicant has indicated that the property owners unintentionally included the proposed excluded property in Plan Development District Number 7 back in 2006. Plan Development District Number 7 keeps its current regulations as a placeholder of sorts. Plan Development District number seven keeps its current regulations as a placeholder of sorts, and the first ordinance requires the new Plan Development District to abide by the current regulations of storage. So basically, all it's doing is pulling that land out. PD number seven stays as it is, just with less acreage. The second ordinance changes the regulations in one of those tracts we're creating, or potentially creating, and that's the 1.07 acre Plan Development District, which is being requested for office uses. And the third is the change to the remaining 2.3 acre Plan Development District to allow for an assisted living facility.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
So we remove the 3.4 acres from the original PD?
Yes, from the current Plan Development District number seven.
Let's say we don't, let's say we don't rezone the 3.4, so what happens to the land?
Then it.
So if we don't do the zoning tonight, what happens to the land that we moved from the?
Well, it depends on what may be approved. If the first ordinance is approved.
No, 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 if we don't, not, not.
If you don't, then it just stays currently as Plan Development District number seven, which allows for storage uses.
But we just took it out?
Well, you haven't yet.
No, he's in step number two, if we remove it and don't approve.
It keeps the storage use as far as zoning.
Right, the first ordinance literally is just carving land out. It's gonna retain the same uses, and everything else is the current structure.
Doesn't fall back to, it's under what I'm saying?
Let's try to say.
Uh, no, it would retain the, well, in this case, it's, it's gonna keep the, the, in the staff report and the ordinance that's presented to you, it would keep the current regulations that it has today. It would just be its own acreage.
But this, this ordinance doesn't say that if that land is not rezoned, that it will revert back to the original PD seven?
If it's not approved, then it just, it stays as it is.
It's, you got 3.4 acres now sitting out there outside any zone.
In section four and section five of the ordinance, it does reference back to ordinance 0656. So what would happen is the two acre, the two subsets are removed, and then they, if no other action is taken, they will be their own standalone PDs under 0656, which means they would be limited to the storage buildings, storage sales office, et cetera.
You're setting up two pieces of property.
The current owners have advised us that they don't expect to continue that use on that additional acreage.
But I just want to know what happens if we don't approve it?
It goes back to the original use.
And if, if, if the first ordinance is not approved, obviously, it stays all under unified ownership under PD seven.
Yeah, and when we do three and four.
That's when you're changing the use from storage to something else.
Those would have to be approved on their own, and if one of those, or both of them, were turned down, it reverts back to storage.
Yes. It doesn't revert, we say, it actually stays.
Stays the same, yeah.
That's what I thought, but I just want to be clear.
So all we're doing with this, with number two, is just pulling that 3.4 acres, and now there's two, two pieces of property.
Right, and I don't know how y'all can see this.
Mayor, make a motion, we exclude this 3.4 acre tract of land from existing PD number seven, and designate it as two Plan Development Districts, two new.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second, is there a discussion?
Yes, yes. You know, we're hearing the term homeless.
We're not at there yet. We're on number two.
Okay.
Will that comply with the wishes of the applicant?
That's number three then.
With this motion?
Yes, this would then put all that land under unified ownership as well, because as now, there's, there's two separate owners within the current PD number seven.
All we're doing now is just pulling that piece out.
Just remove the item.
All right, there's a motion and a second, if there's no other discussion, we'll vote all those in favor. Councilman Allen Cat stepped away from the table and like a call. Now, item three.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending regulations in PD Plan Development District consisting of a 1.07 acre tract of land recently excluded from PD Plan Development District number seven, describing said 1.07 acres of land, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 081-1 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, this is now talking about the 1.7 acre tract of land that is part of what you all just approved to be, or on first hearing have approved to be removed. In this 1.7 acre tract, the applicants propose to open an office to be utilized for the Fort Ben Family Promise organization. As you can see here, it will be directly adjacent to the Uncle Ben Storage Facility, to the west side of the property.
Uncle Bob.
I'm sorry.
Uncle Ben's a rice.
Uncle Sam, Uncle Bob.
Here's some site pictures, essentially, there's, it's undeveloped right now, you can't, you know, it's just some green space. The applicants have not requested any deviations to architectural or site design. These are just preliminary concept drawings right now, just depicting basically what they're looking for, which is an all-brick building, they will have standing C metal roof. Here's a proposed site plan that's just gonna show the approximate footprint of the building and potential driveway and parking areas for the site. And the applicants are here tonight to speak. Planning and zoning commission has forwarded a positive recommendation for this use. Planning staff recommends approving it, and it is in line with both comprehensive plan and the future land use map.
Nancy, you're the spokesman. Congressman.
Mayor, may John Tipton, the president, could he speak? Because he could need a little bit more framework.
Oh, come on, Nancy.
Is that Uncle Bob?
That's wrong.
Actually, my name's John Tipton, I'm the president of the board for Family Promise. Just a little bit about our program. Our mission is to meet the immediate needs of homeless families while empowering them to attain self-sufficiency. We're an interfaith organization, we partner with 14 nearby organizations or congregations to aid families experiencing homelessness. We have 178 affiliates in 41 states. Currently, we're located on the New Hope Lutheran Campus, which is near the intersection of Lexington and Murphy Road. We've been there since 2005. We have 10 host congregations, this is where the families spend the night. First United Methodist of Missouri City, New Hope Lutheran, Southminster Presbyterian, First Presbyterian Sugarland, All Saints Episcopal, Christ United Methodist, Parkway United Methodist, St. Martin's Lutheran Church, Covenant Glen United Methodist, and Colony Creek Community Church. We also have four support congregations that assist financially and with volunteer efforts, St. Lawrence Parish, Joy Lutheran, Thore Unitarian, and Sugarland Baptist. We have 12 board members and an executive director, all are active in the community, and several are here this evening, six are retirees. Many of us are employed by large companies in the area, such as ABB, Amity Bank, MD Anderson, Chevron, nearby school districts, and yes, we have a clergy member. Many are active in the congregations I just listed, and several of us serve with other nonprofits in Fort Ben County. As for the day center or our office complex or office building, currently, we're on New Hope's campus. The building's in disrepair and plan for demolition in the near future. Ironically, we need a home of our own. Our planned structure is at the 4,700 block of Cartwright Road, 3,500 square feet plus parking, has meeting and counseling rooms for career guidance, job placement, budgeting, et cetera. The appearance will be similar to the nearby Office Park, and our hours of operation are 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. It's important to note, no overnight usage of the facility. About the clients, typically, three or four families, a maximum of 14 individuals, are at the facility during the day. Background and drug testing is required of all individuals. These are, these families are not from a habitual homeless situation. It's generally event triggered, such as a spouse's departure or a significant financial setback. Because they live paycheck to paycheck, then this event puts them into a homeless situation. The good side is we feel these have a good chance of success, these families, of getting to their feet. The average length of training or counseling is 45 to 60 days. 90%, nine out of 10, are actively employed or have jobs. We've had 27 families so far this year, four are in the program now. Of the remaining 23, all but two are in homes of their own and monitored by Family Promise. So we hope you'll approve the change requested, we have much to do in our community. Thank you.
Outstanding program.
Appreciate it.
And I know that they're members of the churches, and, and they're here, stand up, back there.
Mayor, may I speak just a couple of minutes really about?
Just state, for the record, Nancy, your name and.
My name is Nancy Olson, and I've had the honor of being on the board of Fort Ben Family Promise for about three years. And while John talks so eloquently about really the nuts and bolts of the program, I wanted to talk to you just a minute about the heart of the program. We help these families in a way that we like to say that we are really a hand up and not a hand out. And while these families are in really a chaotic time in their life, we try to maintain some sense of normalcy with these families, especially the children. And the children thrive, they go to school, they're on the sports teams in our high schools, in our middle schools. They play musical instruments, they have perfect attendance records. These children thrive, and what is so exciting for us is when we truly bridge a family back to self-sufficiency, and they get a home of their own. And this sort of blip in their life, and we like it to be a blip, this, this time of, of sort of chaos and crisis is, is just a blip, and that they are able to go back to self-sufficiency and be contributing members to our community. It's a very vital program for our community, and I certainly and respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
I have a couple questions that I would like to ask, is, is that, and I understand the need, but at the same time, in my mind, kind of go all the other different ordinances that we have in the city. And, and I'm just a little curious, because you list some churches here in Missouri City?
Yes.
I don't think that you comply with the requirements for housing people overnight in relationship to our other ordinances, and that concerns me. You know, in terms of fire codes and building codes and that type of thing.
With respect to the churches themselves?
They do, and that's why they can't stay at New Hope. They were turned down at New Hope because they don't meet the code, the other churches do meet.
You're speaking for them, Allen, and I don't want you to do that.
I know that.
I understand that, but what it says here, written, it says that they are housing people.
They are.
Okay? And I'm, and I'm just trying to get that clarified.
Let me correct that, like, in the case of New Hope, they use the First United Methodist Church across the street for, for the overnight stay of the families, because New Hope cannot do it.
And I believe Covenant Glen as well, am I correct?
Yes.
And all I'm basically saying is, do those facilities meet the city requirements to house people overnight? Okay? And somebody from the staff is gonna have to answer that question. Because I know there were some issues in the past about not meeting the requirements for overnight stay.
I'm familiar with the New Hope situation, we can get back with you on the others, but I believe we're okay on the other churches.
Well, somebody from staff can answer that, my question is.
We would have to do some more research to find out what would be required exactly for persons to be able to stay when in need at a facility like that.
Because they're not residential facilities, and all I want to just make sure that we're meeting the requirements to house people overnight.
Yes, we can look into that.
One of them is very bad to go happen, and we haven't done that, okay? That's, that's the right thing to do to protect those, those people. Now, looking at your, your layout here, you, of the 1.7 acre tract, you're not using it all.
Correct.
So what's gonna happen with the part that's not being used?
I'm gonna step up.
Go, go ahead, Larry.
That's all right, Larry Sternham with Kelly Collusion Associates, and I've been working with him with regards to this site. To answer your question, that remaining portion will just be open green space, playground area, just open space. There is no future plans for expansion or anything along those lines right there. So that's just amenity green space back there. It's not a ton of space, I mean, the tract is not that wide. So even though it looks proportionally like it's, it's a, a large amount of space, but it's really not a large amount of space back there. And I'll finish entertaining any other questions you have. I had a few other things I wanted to just bring to the council's attention, but I know this is a public hearing, so I'm not quite sure if I should bring those to your attention now, or should I wait till you close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. What I would like to also just, just say that we have gone through the, the normal process that's, that's required here in Missouri City. We went and we've met with all the homeowners association in the area to make sure that they were all aware of the project, what was going on with First Colony, with Brightwater, and it seemed to be reasonably accepted, especially after we did the presentation. We thought it was a, a proper step to do, so that way we would squash any fears. As you know, if it was a, a big, big deal, they'd be on the outside and around the corner. So we did go through that process as well. One of the questions that I just want to kind of put it on the forefront, so you have all the facts when you're making your decision, why did they, they decide to buy a piece of land and do it? Part of their funding was for them to actually buy a piece and actually put down roots in a specific location. They couldn't go and, and, because there was mention at some of the public meetings that we did, that, well, why don't they rent strip center space and those type of things, and, and that is the reason. They're gonna have a home, a solid rock foundation to continue this program on. We've met all the requirements with regards to city staff, and so we've tried to make sure we address all the technical issues with respect to this project. So all the technical issues with regards to this particular project have been addressed and have met with approval from the staff. With that, that's the only thing I'd like to say, and I'll entertain any other questions that you may have.
Danny, you had some?
Yes, sir. I, I really respect and admire your compassion for the less fortunate, which I think is very noble, noble thing to do. Please keep doing that. And on the other hand, looking at things from the residents, especially those people who live in that area, who have worked very hard to buy a house, maintain the property values, and trying to come up, keep up with that area. I mean, as much, as compassionate as we are, the fact that when you mentioned homeless, it's been some, some, I, I'm trying to find a diplomatic word, but not very desirable thing, okay? So what can, I have received, received complaints and concern about a resident surrounding the area. So what can you do to assure the people that, we're not implying that audio, homeless people are bad people. I mean, that's several uncontrollable situation, but what can you do to assure us these people will not bring the negative activities, less desirable actions to the areas that, that have a negative impact?
If I might, let me respond to that and then ask a colleague to step forward. First off, these families, remember, a lot of times you get the impression of someone maybe sleeping under an overpass as, as the homeless person. This is a homeless family, it's required to have children, they have the responsibilities and are trying to put together a life for their children. So what happens is they usually have just a single event that triggers it. They, these same kids are going to school with the other kids that are in the families of the folks who may have communicated with you. So it, it's, it's a family just like one that you may have been with at the grocery store or at the schools previously. And then we have a letter from our current landlord, and I was gonna ask Jim Ushkrat if you could come forward and read it, to help give you a flavor for what it's like for the current environment that Family Promise is in.
Yeah, my name is Jim Ushkrat, I've lived here for, in this neighborhood for 25 years now. I'm a member of New Hope Lutheran Church, and we asked our pastor, who, basically, his office is right in the same vicinity as the family center has been for the last eight years, for some reflections on, you know, the, them as a neighbor. If I could just read some excerpts from this, it says, this is from Reverend Richard J. Wolf, a senior pastor of New Hope Lutheran Church in Missouri City, Texas. "I'm the senior pastor of New Hope Lutheran, and our congregation has been associated with Family Promise since 2005 and provided space on our campus for their day center located in our former worship center. I can speak from firsthand knowledge and others in our congregation who have longer acquaintance than I can fully attest, that Family Promise has always been an exemplary neighbor in every way possible. The program is well-supervised and administered with the utmost professionalism. Facilities are always well-maintained and cared for. The safety of the clients and of our parishioners in close proximity has never been an issue. As you are perhaps aware, the purpose of the facility is solely as a day center. The clients spend their evenings at the various congregations that support Family Promise. As most of the adults are either at work during the day or out looking for work, and the children are away at school much of the time, there are significant, significant periods of time when only staff occupy the building. Even when the families are all present for a short while, they are fully supervised. In fact, most of the time, you could hardly notice that they are there. We have never experienced issues with Family Promise in regards to sound, cleanliness of the property, safety, or any other concern." the property, safety, or any other concern. In short, Family Promise has been the best neighbor we could ever have asked for. The only reason they are considering relocation is that the current building is quite old, I can attest to that, and has become quite costly to maintain. In the future, New Hope is considering using that part of our campus for future expansion. As my hope and expectation, you would approve the relocation of the Family Promise Day Center to the proposed site on Cartwright Road. Provides a very much needed service to our community with little or no impact on the neighborhood or on the resources of Missouri City. As with all the other congregations affiliated with Family Promise can attest, Family Promise has been and will continue to be a blessing to us all and to our city."
Very good.
Yeah.
And I think, just to kind of reiterate what they had mentioned earlier, a lot of these people that are there and kids and stuff that are there, they're kids that are actually in Fort Ben ISD or in the school systems now, who their classmates don't know that they're kind of going through a difficult time. And they're normally all the bright shining stars of those schools.
Lawrence-
Yes, sir.
The thing that I have-
Yes, sir.
Similar to what Councilmember Nguyen was talking about, in line with, you know, we had talked about, you said that if the people were opposed against it, they would be out here. And people laughed. I got several emails talking about this project, that they, that people, according to our city ordinances, that X amount of feet, I'm sure Ed can probably share, that showed somehow that it's about 18 homes or 16 homes that got this letter, showing that this project is going to be there. Some of it, some of the people that got the wind of this through FCCA, as you mentioned, HOA meetings or what have you. Same thing that, in looking at this into a little bit of details, and I know this is not about this project, that it shows from some of the residents, there's about 10 sites that are within five miles of where this project is supposed to be, sort of assisted living. Not exactly the same project, but some of it are. So there is, there are concerns there. So as you said, that if they're here, they're not here. Unfortunately, they're not here, or fortunately, they're not here. But there are concerns that I have heard, this is in my district, that as to what Councilmember Nguyen was just exactly talking about, is to how did this project come about? A lot of people felt that they did not know. And again, I followed up with it. It's not anyone's fault. I'm not accusing you guys or accusing FCCO or even city or anything like that, but I think everyone did what they're supposed to. But I just want to make a point that there are oppositions.
One of the things we did, and at our meeting, and I think Councilman Wyatt tended at least to one at the FCC, we contacted them because that's the only medium that we have with regards, and they assured us. And we had a pretty good turnout, I think. It was packed in there. And so we did everything we could do, and I appreciate you, you know, recognizing that. Of course, you know, they always publish it in the paper as usual, and at every meeting that we had with the public, I made clear that, you know, there's two other opportunities. That there was the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that would be in the paper and they had an opportunity to speak at, and also at this forum as well to make sure that all the residents, because one of the things about it I recognize is, I see these people on a daily basis as well as you guys because I live here. So I wanted to make sure that everyone, as best as we could from our end, was notified of that. And no, there were some people that, they didn't know what to expect because they were like, well, hold on a second. The first blush is, oh no, we're going to have, you know, riprap kind of people there. And I think after we've had that meeting and we had an opportunity to give them information and facts, they were more comfortable with it. Not everyone-
And who did you give it to?
At our, it was at the public meeting that we had at FCC. And it was held at their clubhouse and it was probably, I don't even want to inflate the number. I'll let you tell me how many people you think were there, but it was enough people that-
Probably about 40 people.
Okay.
That's the HOA.
But my, you know, I have some other concerns here, is that, and while you got your engineer, the property that's left undeveloped, and I'm kind of a realist, is that enough property to build a housing facility? I mean, because it's kind of like you borrowing space to house people overnight, you know, which could-
People do not spend the night in this building.
No, I understand that. That's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, to answer your question, to answer your question, no, that would not be a suitable because of parking requirements, because of all the other requirements that the city normally would have. That remaining portion of land could not really be used for expanding of any housing or anything of that nature.
In addition to that, in addition to that, it's, you know, we shouldn't project. What
we have here before us is to make a decision on what's, what this particular land item is. To ask what you're going to do in the future, maybe not, maybe not is a good question.
But there's no housing could fit in there. And it's all, it's going to be an open green space area because you just want to have some earth open.
Did y'all consider any other sites in Missouri City other than this location?
We looked at a number of sites from a pricing perspective and convenience. We have 14 congregations, so it was important for us to be as centrally located as we could coming from the New Hope campus. So it wasn't, because volunteers have to drive to the site, and we wanted to make sure we had a good location from that perspective as well.
Also from a development standpoint, this tract right here is already set for development. It's got water, sewer, drainage, all those amenities or facilities, infrastructure that you need to do a development. Some of these other sites, you're going to have to extend some utilities. You're going to have to add some more development costs to get those tracks up and ready to make it-
And your building, a building just like the others that are there already.
That is correct.
And I appreciate those answers because, see, there's another aspect to this that I have to justify in my mind-
Yes, sir.
-to vote for, is that this is a not-for-profit.
Yes, sir.
That land currently bring income to the city. When I zone this property, I'm making a donation on behalf of all the citizens to this organization. And I want to be able to justify in my mind that that's the right thing to do. And that's what I'm asking.
We understand.
I understand.
And we've made that exception once before. Most people on this council don't realize there's a synagogue in that same complex.
Well, we do with, we do with every church, but the fact of it is-
I know, but I mean, most people don't even know that there's a synagogue in those buildings.
So what would be the total economic recession that we're going to make? It would give this up? If we approved this, $4,500 a year from our tax row?
Roughly asked by what council?
You know, I mean, based on the presentation that I've learned, this seemed to me, this is like a training center. It's not a place, it's not a training center. And I feel very confident about that. So with $4,500 economic that we have to wait in order to make a decision not to house the people, I think it's a little bit hard. So I think the most-
Yeah, and you're right Danny. And I think the most important point that needs to be made, and this is in 41 states, this isn't a small organization-
178 affiliates.
My own ministers back here, and we had a nice presentation Sunday about what Karen Olson has done with this organization. The most important thing about here is that those people that are there are being placed back in homes and they're buying those homes in the community where they are. They're buying houses that are on our market today and they're taking empty houses out of these subdivisions and rental property that we have the biggest problem in this city with, they're actually becoming homeowners and are paying property taxes to recoup that $4,500 we just gave up over there. And that's the most important thing, is that of all those people that you've trained, they're there to buy their home back. And that's what's important for us to remember.
And that's a good aspect of the rationale that people need to understand while we make a decision.
And I got those same emails that were concerned about, quote, homeless people, but being in a church that has been familiar with this program, and as I explained to them, I said, they've been doing this for eight years right next to your house. Did you know they were there? No. Well, they have been for eight years. Did you know they were in your church? No. Well, they have been for eight years, which you're concerned today. And most of those people said, oh, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Mr. Ellicott. On the emails you may have gotten, I don't know if they attended the session. What we have found is as we describe our program and dispel some of the myths, such as some folks thought families slept over in our day center, which they don't, they sleep at the congregations, that may have been part of it. And that's how it tended to roll out in our presentations as we educated and informed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I was going to ask Robyn, was that pretty much where the emails that you received, that was the, kind of the basis for their concerns?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of lack of real communication. Our citizens do not have the benefit to listen to this. But what excites me is that we be known as a compassionate city. And I'm for it, and I hope you will too.
They know how to use a computer, they just don't know how to go look up things before they make that decision.
We tell them. It's our job to tell them.
If they went and looked it up, they'd see the same thing that I printed right here about this organization.
Let's vote.
Everybody's not going to know that.
Let's vote, man.
Is there a motion?
Move to it, Doc.
Let's see. Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second with a lot of support from Councilman Nguyen, all those in favor. Motion carries. It is a two reading ordinance, so it will be back. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. You don't have to stay for the rest of this boring conversation. But thank you for your support. All right, now, item four.
And Olson City, Missouri City, Texas, amending regulations in PD Plan Development District consisting of a 2.33 acre tract of land recently excluded from PD Plan Development District Number Seven, describing said 2.33 acres of land, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, this is in regards to the remaining acreage that was removed from the original Plan Development District Seven earlier, or the first hearing of that, the first reading. In this reading, or in this ordinance, the applicants are requesting to amend Plan Development, the Plan Development District to allow for an assisted living facility. Again, here's the aerial map of it. It'll be the remaining portion of that area that was previously acted upon. Here are some more site pictures. The elevations depicted here, and from what we have talked about with the applicant, do meet our current architectural design codes and would meet the height classifications for LC2 retail commercial, local retail commercial establishment. They are not, as I said, requesting any architectural deviations to our zoning ordinance, and they are not requesting any site design deviations to our ordinance either. This is a basic concept again of what the site will look like. It's all still very preliminary. This is not proposed to be included with the ordinance. It's more just for reference. And as I said, they're not asking for anything that would require a deviation. Planning and Zoning Commission has heard the case and they do forward a positive recommendation. Staff also recommends approval of the case. And it is in compliance with our future land use and comprehensive plan. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions that the council may have.
Let me ask you a question while you're still up there. Don't we have another PD adjoining this property that has retirement assisted living in it already?
The, to the south of this tract-
Project?
Yes, let me, here we go. To the south of this tract, on the other side of the Uncle Ben's property, and somewhat to the east.
You've been eating too much rice.
Man, actually, I'm just hungry. I haven't had a good dinner yet. But on the other side of those storage units down there, and slightly to the east, so closer to Colonial Lakes Drive, they were allowed to have, in that case, it was independent living. This would be more dependent care. So it's slightly different, but yes, there is a similar zoning to the southeast.
So this is purely assisted living?
They could build assisted living in the old office under the PD.
Yes, but it was very minimal. It wasn't like memory care or anything like that.
Of course, and it's either yes or no.
Yes, correct. Yes.
So actually, this would ultimately give us two locations within the same business park boundary that has zoning for assisted living?
Yes.
Okay.
But nothing's been built on that first one, correct?
Correct.
Does that mean it can't be built on it?
I'm just asking questions like you.
And been rezoned either.
Yeah, that's my problem specifically. It's mine too.
Was there ever a point in time where the facility was intended to take the full 3.4 acres?
Yes. Well, I don't believe it was to take up the entire 3.4 acres. Long ago, before this tract was actually put into Plan Development District Number Seven, it was still within Plan Development District Number 10, which included the Colonial Lakes Office Park that y'all were discussing earlier. And part of that PD allowed for assisted living slash nursing care uses. I believe there was also a daycare use that is developed there that was part of that. And then later on, they decided that they were going to do an office park and so it, it kind of switched. There was ownership changes, that kind of thing. So the scope of the original plans went away, but that was back in around 2006, early 2006.
Yeah. So placing that piece, that development on this piece of property, I mean, it'll meet all of the city codes and requirements, traffic, yeah, access into and out of the facility?
Yes, sir. We've had to submit a TIA to the city staff and we've submitted that information. There was one, because it's only, we're going to have one shared driveway right there, so they had to apply for a variance, which staff has reviewed and, and I'm not going to put words in their mouth, but I know they have received a copy of it and they're going to approve, they're going to have to because it's only access you have. So both tracks will have shared joint access. As far as water, sewer, those other pieces of infrastructure that you need to develop, that's all there in place. And again, I'm going to kind of back up a little bit. Lawrence Turner with Kelly Collusion Associates here on behalf of the owner. I do have the owner here this evening, Dr. Gogia, here to help address any of the technical issues relating to this type of facility. This is an assisted living type facility. This is not an independent. And it's in such a manner that it's always going to have to be something along those lines, that it's not something that you could convert into apartments or anything like that, the way this is constructed.
Become an empty building if it doesn't work out.
It can be that, but it can't be an apartment.
I'm not saying that that's going to happen, okay?
I just wanted to clarify though that this, you know-
That is a very important point that I asked Lawrence to bring up, is that every time, and we have a number of these, I don't know, I guess they think Missouri City's getting old or something, but Jerry and I retiring and Dawn, but-
They don't need to think about that. It's a fact.
Yeah, there's four of us up here retired now, but anyway, the fear, the fear always is with senior living facilities that the owners someday go, oh, this didn't work out and we're just going to have an empty building unless you let us put apartments in. A word comes out. But I wanted you to, what I wanted you to be very specific on is that the design of this building is not, not one that even would future, even be converted to an apartment because there are rooms that are only conducive to assisted living.
Did you do any type of feasibility study?
Yes, there has been a feasibility, a marketing study done on this project and it was submitted. I believe-
I read it.
I was going to say, Councilman Wyatt has it, and if anyone else needs a copy, I can-
For the sake of the rest of the council, would you kind of let us know what it says?
I think it's in the everyman. Can you hear it?
The bottom line is-
But the doctor might be able to answer that question since it was done on his behalf.
Yeah, the bottom line is that it still is a need. I mean, I hate to say it, and I'm standing up here with white hair underneath my chin as well, but there's just ever increasing need of this type of facilities warranted here in the area. Again, this is not an independent. This is a dependent living, assisted living type of facilities, which is kind of different than what would be south of us or some of the other projects that are within the city. Excuse me.
Doctor, let me ask you. Unfortunately, for facilities like this, after a period of time, they don't have the best reputation in the world. They don't take care of their clients like they should and- They don't take care of their clients like they should, and that ends up being, you know, something that, that people have to live with. I need some assurance going forward that you don't take that attitude down the road, that if my mother and dad were there, if my mother was there, I don't want to have to be calling you up telling, this is a nasty place over here, it smells bad, it smells like urine when you walk in here. I don't want it to have the same reputation, so many quote nursing homes and assisted, and my mother was in a very nice one, never had a complaint, but I've been in others that weren't. And if they're gonna be in this city, we want them to be first class.
I can assure you that this is going to be better than any other facility around here. I've been working with assisted living and memory care for last almost 15 years. I go make visits over there, that's one reason I came in, I say, no, I do not agree with what other people are doing. We are putting a lot of emphasis on other than what patients or residents deserve, they need. Our, our population is aging so fast, there are not enough facilities to take care of them. This is going to be eighty, seventy plus minus facility assist, not only assisted living, twenty, twenty-five beds will be dedicated to memory care. I worked with Alzheimer's dementia patients for last 15 years, I'm the first one to publish any book, how to take care of the Alzheimer's dementia rehab patients of these in terms of rehabilitation. I speak at the national level on this topic. So, these residents will have access to the fitness center, our goal is to minimize the hospitalization, keep them healthy and fit. We're gonna look at, they'll have onsite access to onsite home health, they'll access to physician and or nurse practitioner 24/7, they'll have access to nurses 24/7, access to therapy 24/7. There's going to be a rehab facility on the site. This is not going to smell, this is not a nursing home, this is the assisted living and memory care unit.
But you understand why I'm.
Definitely, I, I'm with you, I've seen a number of facilities here, I visit facilities wherever I go for a vacation or anything, I always tend to visit, let me see what is going on, what I can pick up the best from other facilities to add to this one.
Doctor, you're not a not-for-profit, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
You're not a not-for-profit, right? I just wanna make sure before I.
I get my bill, so.
No, no, no.
I don't wanna give up all the taxes tonight.
No, this is for profit, and it will also generate employment for about forty to fifty people around in the.
Do you practice in geriatric medicine?
I practice rehabilitation medicine.
My background is healthcare, so I understand a little bit about this stuff, but the question that I wanna ask you is that, did you, did you communicate, or were you aware that there was a tract already zoned in the area? That, that you inquiry into that, or you just chose to go a different? See, I got a real problem with having two zonings there, I really, really do.
There's a lot of difference between independent living and assisted living. Independent living do not have access to any healthcare at all, and I want to make it clear, this is not a healthcare, but when the residents need care, we can provide the care to them, okay? The independent livings, the residents or the tenants, they come in, go in, drive, do shopping, go whatsoever they want to do. These residents are there to stay, the traffic is very minimum over there, okay? So that's, that's the difference between the two facilities.
You know, and going back to what, you know, Councilman Wyatt had asked, when you say these, these are in, in living members that are on the site. So for their healthcare, for example, if they need to go see a doctor, you would have them go to their doctor's office, or have their doctors come here?
There's a choice, they have choice. We have the physician who will visit the facility, so if they choose to have that physician as their primary care physician, then they don't need to go anywhere.
Sure.
But if they have their own primary care physician, and they want to go visit them, that they, they have the choice.
Only reason I was asking was the significant difference between a nursing home and assisted living. Is, you know, nursing home, obviously, physicians go back over, there's a long-term care.
Mm-hmm.
And then here, you know, they, they can't walk around, they can move around.
Right.
And I would assume that it's almost like they're there, but they have that access to go if they want to, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I am going to, I am going to support the motion to approve your project. I just hope, where we think it's independent, that they don't come in and put in a facility similar to yours, because they can do, and you just didn't know that, but they can do that, within that, within that same definition.
Maybe first one there gets the, gets the apple, it might just hurt the rest of them.
We are ready to start, as soon as we go through the permit and all that, we'll be ready.
The other thing I'm going to say is, is that probably being at first may make the case, because your marketing study was not that strong, it was marginal at best. It does say that there's room there, but there's not a lot of wiggle room.
I understand.
Lawrence, does either one of these two sites, this one or the one previous on our agenda, require any kind of retention?
No, we shouldn't need any detention on these sites.
Let me, let me ask a question, I, maybe the council can help me. You know, one of the questions that you brought up was, there was a concern that at some point in time, maybe, you know, that practice didn't, didn't survive, and it becomes a candidate for, you know, apartments. Is there anything in code that, that we can place that would either restrict that reverting to an apartment, or that it would have to come back to the council for approval to either rezone it?
That's a PD.
They would have to come back, the council, because what we're approving tonight is what he's asking for.
As a PD. As assisted living.
So my, my point is, is that if for some reason, and I know you'll, you'll make a success of it, is that if for some reason, 10 years down the road, you say, well, but, you know, I'm outta here, and somebody says, well, I can buy them and set them for apartments, but we have something that would safeguard that happening.
This is defined as an assisted living facility with no more than 80 residents residing at the assisted facility.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
One is, and I've read your marketing study, can you just kind of elaborate a little bit, what extent did you go to your marketing study to make a decision about this?
Well, I mean, as far as.
These are experts.
Not, not a problem. The firm that we had prepared this marketing study, they just basically did an analysis of, based on population projections, based on existing facilities that are there in the immediate area, and that gave him the information to determine if it was a viable, if it could be a viable project for him, also based on his years of experience and, and his clientele that he has, and that he's dealing with. So, that's how he made his, his decision.
The second question I'd like to ask to code, how many, how many of these facilities do we have in Missouri City? Just roughly?
Independent and assisted living, or just?
Just assisted.
Okay, that would be.
Half a dozen?
Think about.
Four or five?
I think.
It's three.
I think it's four.
If you go back, if you go back, if you go back TDH's license, based on the license and what they have, it's three.
The three of them, I can.
I read it in the report, that's only what I'm answering, I read it.
Well, I want it, I want it, I know you know, Jerry, I want it out. Let me, let me, give me some light, give me a little, little bit here. Three, okay, how, how many, have we, have we, the code department, have we gone by and inspected these places? Can we do that? Can our code people do that?
What we would be inspecting for is not the quality of the care there.
But, yeah, I know.
We rely upon the state for that. We would be inspecting for the standard nuisance that you would find, whether it's an apartment complex, whether it's an independent living center, or an assisted living center, or a nursing home. If they prepare food there, our health inspector should be checking the kitchen and making sure the food is properly prepared, or that it's properly maintained.
So if there was some reason to suspect, because you saw some orders or something like coming out there, you would kind of do your new deal.
We could, we could find a way to take a look and, and see what's going on.
Have you found that in, in the three?
I have not heard of any reports on those.
Just along, along those lines, in terms of there. In, in term, from being in healthcare, and you would get more inspections than the city would ever give you. You got Texas Department of Health, you got Medicare, you got HICF, you know, so, or you won't get reimbursed on the food.
They're going through a lot of restrictions by the, restrictions by state, and all sorts of, you know.
Also, I'm, I'm gonna back up to Councilman Emery, your comment, and normally, I don't like doing PDs, because when you do a PD, you can't change anything.
That's good.
It means anything, and so.
We know that, as I was telling Danny, we know that, but unless the public knows that we've got that safeguard.
Yes, sir.
There's always that thought in the back of their mind, well, it's 10 years, and then it's gonna be apartments, but if we've got some safeguard built in, and the public knows about it, then, you know, we've done our, to be our due diligence to let them know.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Councilmember Emery, just want to make sure the public knows that is a long-term thinker.
What, and I don't remember, Lawrence, how many parking spaces are provided?
We made sure that we met the code, and just quickly looking at it on site, there's about forty, thirty, thirty to, thirty-five to forty spaces being provided.
And, and how many of those do we think will be occupied by staff?
Probably eight.
At a given time, typically during the, which is the peak is the daytime, let's say 7:00 AM till 4:00 or 5:00 PM, there'll be about seven to eight employees at that time.
So the rest are available for clients of the business, which a lot of these don't drive. And, and that's another question I'm gonna ask you, is that in the memory centers, one of the concerns that I always have, because I read about it in the paper every day. How do you control that client from leaving that facility and be wandering around somewhere? Because I read about it every day, and you do too, and you wonder, how do these people just walk out of a facility? So I know that in many cases, those, those memory care patients are, are confined to an area, they may have a fenced area out in the back where they can walk, but they can't get out. Do we have the same thing here?
Absolutely, we are going to have the double system here, actually, security system. Number one, the units are in the back, the memory care. It will have its own alarm system, both even going to outside in the backyard, and also coming out in front, number one. And also will have the second system at the main gate, so they will not be able to go anywhere out of that particular, I'm talking about the memory care.
And you. We have put in all of those requirements in accordance with, with TDC and Medicare.
Most of it is requirement, we are adding additional.
But they don't get reimbursed.
Security system to it.
Throwing it out there, because people bring that up, they go, well, these people are gonna be wandering the streets, you know.
They don't get out, he don't get paid.
I know, well, yeah, I know we get concerned about it though, when they do, so. Any other questions? It is a two reading ordinance as well, is there a motion? Are you gonna make the motion, Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt?
Even I would reluctantly done so, since there's two zonings over there.
Yeah, I know. Councilman Emery made the second, there's no other discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carry. All right, doctor. Four of us up here may be there one day, so, we're just, we're concerned about our own health.
I'll be the last one.
In your future.
Yeah. We're just all concerned about how we're gonna be taken care of. All right, this is 7B1, these are public hearings and related actions.
An order of the City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, finding declaring the residential building and related structures located at 3434 Fifth Street in the City of Missouri City, Texas, to be public nuisances, and ordering the demolition and removal of the residential building and related structures, and providing for severability.
I'll move to adopt.
Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Marshall made the second, there's no discussion, any discussion?
Sorry. That was the motion there.
That's your second?
Yes, it was.
No discussion, we'll vote?
Aren't there, aren't there, aren't there still some people living over here?
At 3434 Fifth Street, there are not any occupants.
Okay.
Last week, the building official, Mr. Wells, and his staff went out there, viewed the premises, and in an effort to determine, you have the photographs before you of what it looks like, in an effort to determine what the cost would be to restore this facility. That is not my recommendation at all, my recommendation is to order that it be demolished. It.
Or the better.
Estimate that we have is around $100,000, I have heard that contractor for the owner, and the owner is here tonight, and may wish to address you on this. The estimate we heard verbally was about $75,000. We believe that this property is substandard by definition, by appearance. The, the fire call in July caused significant damage to it, there's damage through the roof at one end of it, the rafters are burned out, it was an open attic, so the fire went down through the attic, although the apartment at the far end may look to be in good condition. We're very concerned about the, the stability of the structure. In the apartment where the fire was, the fire went through the floor, so you actually walk on dirt, you don't walk on floorboards or on a slab at that point. It's still open, you, as I, the pictures in your packet may be more illustrative than these, that fence in the foreground of that picture, just so you'll know, is the fence around the elementary school.
So this is next to the elementary school?
It, it has a separate tract that separates it from the elementary school, but this is very close to the elementary school.
You say the owner's here, wants to tell us?
I believe Ms. Guerrero is here.
Why we shouldn't?
I, I know she's here, I don't know what she will say. Staff recommends that it be demolished.
All right.
Pull it down, pull the mic down to her, thank you.
Yes, I'm on the building at 3434 Fifth Street, and on the, the fire and the pictures that you saw, are the, it's a four apartment unit. And one apartment, that one that y'all saw the picture there, caught on fire, but the other three are, there was no burn, they're not burned. They have smoke damage, and the, the windows were broken on the other three, and the doors because of the smoke, by the fire, and which they had to do. I have gotten an, an estimate to repair it, and, and the contractors, it can, it can be repaired, you know, without, you know, having to remove all the other three apartments, that there's no, no damage to them. And I would like to ask y'all to let me, give me permission to rebuild the, the apartment that was damaged, and bring up to code the electrical on all, three of the, all four of them, as well as the plumbing. Everything will be brought, be brought up to code. The contractor, the contractor that's, that's, will be doing the work is, is. You know, he's registered with the City of Missouri City, and he has given me a, the estimate and the, his insurance information and everything, I would like for y'all to see if it, if y'all want to look at the.
Have you looked at it?
I have not looked at the.
Well, go back to the original question, is this a, is this building standing by itself, or are there three other units?
It's, uh.
It was four units.
Was originally, looks like five units, and one of the units was converted into a single unit, so there's actually four units existing in the, that's one long building. So it's one single building, but separate apartment units. The fire started at the west end, went into the attic, burned out probably about 50% of the attic area, the rafters, and did heavy extensive damage to the rest of the.
So the other, the other units have damage as well? Because they're all under one roof, right?
Yes, they're all under one roof, a half. Yes, they're all under one roof, have extensive attic damage, heat and smoke damage. The first two units on the west end received the major portion of the fire damage, and each unit has extensive amount of water damage.
So in, in your professional opinion, is it even possible to repair this structure without tearing it completely down?
I would need to see a structural report on the masonry block walls, that would make the main determination. Walking through the building, floors are uneven, unreinforced masonry, if heat and fire did a lot of damage to the walls, that would make a big difference if, if there's major damage to them, which we can't see that at this point in time until we actually got in there, did some tearing out.
Each apartment got firewalls. The fire was started on the one end, the west end, and that's the major.
But it didn't have a firewall in the attic?
In the, in the attic, that one apartment, the attic, the small apartment next to it, the partial rafters got burned. So these two apartments on the west end, they're gonna need repair. The other two apartments had smoke damage. There were really nothing, fire, no fire, no, nothing, but we're willing to replace all the wiring because the wiring's old, it's been back in the seventies, so, and all the plumbing, but it's repairable. And it's the only income my mom's got, it's the only thing we got, you know.
How much is it gonna cost to repair this building?
She got, she got.
She's asking.
Give it to them.
If y'all would like to see it.
While that's, while, she's giving it to you, I, I guess, the, when this apartment was built, it was under some old code standards, right?
Yes.
So now, when you, if you do repair it, you have to come under the current code, am I correct?
That is correct, and additionally, and probably maybe even more importantly, this is a non-conforming structure in that it's, has multiple units. And under the non-conforming ordinance, if the document that she's given to the building official evidences that more than fifty percent of the replacement cost is on the table, then the property has lost its non-conforming status and must conform with the underlying status.
That's the point I'm trying to get to.
And, and the building official may or may not need additional information or time, I'm sorry, to, to review what he's been given today, so I will defer to him on that.
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Was it insured?
No.
So where's the money coming from to repair this?
He has about.
Well, I don't have to know how much money she has, but she's got the ability to.
To pay the property off, we got one more month to pay off.
Yeah.
We don't probably fully clear. She's gonna get the title to it and she's gonna, and get a loan on the, the whole property to rebuild the whole.
Has she even talked to anybody about borrowing money against that property?
No, not yet, but that's what. I would, I would suggest the first thing.
Just speak as an expert on that.
I will suggest that we need to hold off. We need to allow her to get with them and show evidence of, and, and, because she would have to bring it up to code, and that would be included in the cost in terms of electric plumbing and, and all of that good stuff.
Yes.
And then if it falls, that is more than fifty percent of the value of the property, then, of course, you know, you lose the right to, to the non-conforming use anyway.
What does it show?
The repair estimate shows fifty-five thousand dollars. The appraisal district lists the improvements on the property at forty-nine thousand dollars.
That's a hundred percent.
The picture showing before you appears to be relatively recent construction, we searched our records, we have not found any permits pulled for construction out there. We're suspicious that, of the construction methods that were employed at the time, we do not know what they were, we do not know what the plans were. The property is zoned for a commercial usage, not for multifamily residential, and. Staff recommendation.
So it can't be rebuilt as its purpose, as its, as its purpose is today?
You say can or can't?
No, it can.
No, I, I didn't hear what you said.
He would not be able to rebuild it as apartments today anyway.
And why is that?
Because it's non-conforming.
Because, because the, because it's more than, she's, it's costing her more than fifty percent to repair that building. The value is forty-nine thousand, her estimate is what, fifty-some thousand?
Fifty-five.
It's more than what the building is worth on the tax roll, therefore, it loses its non-conformant status.
And could not be rebuilt as an apartment for her. The best thing she needs to do, flatten the property, is to take that down to the ground and start over. I'd rather serious spend fifty-five thousand dollars and put a house on it than to spend fifty-five thousand dollars and try to fix that.
Well, it's, it's a own commercial, right?
Yeah.
But just because it's own commercial, doesn't mean that she can't make an application for zoning.
But as it stands today, being next to that elementary school, it is a health hazard. And it needs to be torn down.
And ultimately, that's what we would bring back to the council, the council wants to wait, is an order for them to improve the structure, which we've already had that discussion, or to, again, order for the demolition. So it comes down to.
I just wanna make sure she understands that if she rebuilds, it would have to be rebuilt as a, I guess she could rebuild it as a commercial structure if it's a own commercial.
Certainly.
You could sell it as commercial property. It cannot be rebuilt as a four-unit apartment today. And if you wanted to build a house on it, you'd have to come in and rezone it.
That would be correct.
Residential, to even build a house on it.
Which may be an improvement to the area.
Right, which she may think about doing.
Yeah.
I think she'd probably have more sympathy from this council to rezone that residential and to put a little house on it that she could rent out, maybe.
The LC three is not going next to that school. That ain't gonna work.
So, anyway, that's, that's, that's the choice you got. So what is our, what is our action tonight?
There's a motion, all right. Do I need to amend that?
Now, you made the motion and Councilman Marshall made.
And as I understood it, your motion was staff's recommendation, right?
I didn't even. I was saying, I think we need to proceed with it, based on the cost to repair and the value, there's no other choice.
And I've confirmed with the building official via the Department of Development Services that the information that he has tonight is sufficient for him to make that determination as to fifty percent.
Okay. And I guess for their information is, we need to tell them the timing that they have to take the structure down to the ground.
And, and Mayor and Council, this order does provide thirty.
We need to tell them so that they understand it.
The, the order, order as drafted provides thirty days to them and then thirty days to their mortgagee and lien holders. Given any additional time schedule information that the owners may provide, we can lengthen that or shorten that. We weren't given any time schedules prior to this hearing, but that's one of the opportunities that the owner can present at this hearing.
I assume taxes are current on the property?
Last I checked, they were, yeah.
You said there's a lien on the property, is it an individual or is it a?
Individual.
An individual, and the individual did not require insurance?
No, they, I've talked to, to them and they said that, you know, they had, they were hoping that y'all would let me rebuild the apartment, and like I said, I only owe one more month.
But they didn't require you to have insurance, huh?
No, no.
Okay.
And, and those entities have all been noticed.
All right.
And as, you know, as, as far as the, I think you mentioned something about the, the rooms there in the back, is that what you were talking about, the rats coming in or something like that?
No.
No.
He already talked about the, the back rooms that were added.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just wanna make sure that we've got an understanding here that after tonight, there's thirty days.
Plus another thirty days for a total of sixty.
Plus another thirty, a total of sixty days to demolish the building.
Good, okay.
Clean the slab.
And if the owners or lien holders, mortgagees fail to do so, then the city has the ability to come demolish that and attach a lien on the property.
Attach a lien, but you can do that.
But how many days are y'all leaving to demolish?
Total of sixty.
Sixty? Sixty? It's because, like I said, all the, all the other three apartments, there's, I would like to, to have at least enough time to take the lumber, you know, because they're, all the rafters and all the other three apartments are, are salvageable, you know, they're, a lot of the tuba fours or stuff like that, I, I would like to take if, if I can, because there, there's nothing wrong with them.
How it gets demolished, the method of demolition is okay with us, salvaging our product is fine with us, we, we don't have a problem with that.
Right. You just need to find somebody that'll demolish it and keep the material that's good material for you.
But I'm afraid if I don't have enough time in the six days, I'll come back and ask y'all for, if I don't have it done by, by then, that's, you know.
I think sixty days is.
If you stay in touch with Dale and I, Mr. Wells and I, we can work with you.
But they have to.
Yeah.
We have the sixty days, we won't be in there on the sixty-first day if you've only got one brick to remove. If you're making headway, we will work with you.
Right.
I think that's what this council would want.
Exactly. Long as you're making progress and getting it done expeditiously, this council will work with you.
Work with you.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
If you rebuild, get insurance.
I definitely will.
I'll get zoning.
Well, you may build a commercial. All right, there was a motion, and second all those in favor. Motion carries. Item B two.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, creating reinvestment zone number eleven encompassing a portion of reserve twenty-three and reserve twenty-four in block three of Lakeview Business Park located southwest of the intersection of Buffalo Run and Fond and Road in the City of Missouri City, Texas, making related findings and providing for severability.
Move approval, second.
Councilman Marshall made the move, made the motion, and Mayor Pro Tem White made the second. There's no discussion, we'll vote all those in favor, motion carries. Item eight, appointments are none, we've done nine, ten, our ordinance is ten A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending City of Missouri City ordinance number O two fourteen adopted on March eighteen, two thousand and two, is amended, providing terms and conditions for employee political activity, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
This is second and final reading. Are we satisfied with it this time?
Move it down.
Mayor Pro Tem White made the motions, or a second by Councilman Marshall.
And Mayor and Council, to clarify, at the last meeting, I did, on, on the cuff, prepare some language based on council's direction. Upon further contemplation, I provided an alternative section C, which provides that same purpose. I'll defer to council as which council prefers, staff would recommend, alternative section C. Right, it's the forfeiture of employment and automatic resignation, it's the same consequence.
If elected.
Yeah.
To the council.
Correct. And the timing is the same. And additionally, I just clarified that it include Mayor and Council, since it is part of the personnel manual, when we refer to council, we mean both the mayor, but I did include that additional language to provide additional clarification to the employees reading the manual.
Very good. And a motion and a second, all those in favor.
So if I could have a, an amendment to the motion as to which preference, the, the C or the alternate C?
I'm not seeing the alternate.
Staff's recommendation again is the alternate C that I drafted after the meeting.
It would be on, ordinance has changed, ordinance changes marked, copy on the first page, the bottom of the first page of that.
Is that the motion, or recommendation, and a second?
In fact, I, I liked, I liked forfeit two better than I liked automatic. I mean, it's very clear, you gave up your job.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll go with that as well.
If I could, then in the alternative section C, as a possibility to council where it says automatic resignation, and automatic resignation to provide that to be forfeiture of employment and shall forfeit employment.
Right.
Yep.
Forfeiture.
That's said.
Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, I mean, we're going with forfeiture of employment and we're eliminating your alternative, right?
Well.
The wording that I, that.
Let me read my, my recommendation. Forfeiture of employment, if employee shall be elected to the office of mayor or for any place on the city council, such election shall constitute a forfeiture of employment with the city to be effective as of the date of the election.
Right.
And, and in doing so, I was patterning after the language in our charter that's similar, and that, that's why I reverted to that other language.
Okay.
Understood?
I understand.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Resolutions eleven A.
Resolution, City Council, the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and city secretary to attest the first amendment to the first restated as amended tax abatement agreement by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas and Ben &amp; Keith Company pertaining to certain improvements to an approximately eighty-two acre tract of land located in reinvestment zone number four in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Their motion.
Approval.
Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. There's no discussion, we'll vote all those in favor, motion carries. Eleven B.
Resolution, City Council, the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and city secretary to attest the second restated as amended economic development agreement between the City of Missouri City, Texas and Ben &amp; Keith Company pertaining to certain improvements to an approximately eighty-two acre tract of land located in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Move approval, second.
Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery whispered it, made the second, all those in favor, motion carries. All right, item twelve, city council announcements, twelve A, is report by Councilmember Nguyen regarding the trade mission trip to Indonesia and Vietnam.
You got sound effects?
Yeah, yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, yes, sir. I had informed and even invited Mayor and my fellow counsel about my outbound trade mission trip to Indonesia and Vietnam to promote bilateral trade. And with the Greater Houston Partnership, and as you know, Greater Houston Partnership has been known and well-respected for helping to attract different international companies, big and small, to, to the Houston region, which included our city. And I think our city has been benefited from that marketing effort. And now I would like to tell you that the, overall, the trip went very well, Mayor. We had forty companies went with us. And I was in charge of, of leading the delegation with the Greater Houston Partnership in, in Vietnam, and of, they had an opportunity to meet with counterparts, companies, developer, investors in those two countries. We visited three major cities, Jakarta, Hanoi, and Saigon. But the highlights of my trip as representing our city was the, was the opportunities to represent, to give workshops to these potential investor directly, of convincing them why they should come to our city to invest. And I was so grateful that after my presentation, the general, the, the international manager of Greater Houston Partnership reaffirmed my states, my statement in front of, of a lot of peoples, and he said, you know, Missouri City is located in the heart of the Houston region, and we were so strategically located, close proximity to all the economic drivers such as the Port of Houston, the airport, medical centers. It, it sounded like, you know, he's endorsing us. The good news is that beside the City of Houston, I mean, we are the only one, I'm the only one that represent Missouri City. So, and our name has been known by, an interview by several magazines and national TVs and, and all that. But all, and thank you so much for the staff, Bob and Stacy helped me with the packages and the promotional items, and we give to them. So with that, I thought we had planned a seat, a good seat, and hopefully that will induce them to come to our city, so that, so that they have a chance to see our city. And remember, this is a long-term process.
And we have a sister city there, now?
Yes, that, that is our objective. And my number two report is much more exciting, which is, it costs much less and much easier. It was a teamwork about three weeks ago, the mayor, city manager, Bob Grab, and Stacy, and, and we received a delegation from Shandong Province. Shandong Province is a very prominent in economic, and which located close to the coast in China, we had about ninety-five. We'd had about 95 million people. When I go to China, we talk about our population, and then.
They got that many in one building.
Yes, sir. And, but, but make it very interesting about the visit is that one of the cities in Shandong province had a sister city relationship with Missouri City 12 years ago. And I might want to remind you that 12 years ago, the mayor and Rocky Li and group of Chinese-American took the US delegation to Shandong, and then they signed an MOU with them. And ironically, take them 12 years later to get a revisit. But I thought it's really reignite the commitment that we had made between the two cities. We make a commitment that the two city will help to promote mutual friendship, economic developments, and all that good stuff. So hopefully, Mayor, why don't we make a commitment to visit Shandong? Shandong is a big developing province, and they need to come to America. This is better than ever. You know, right now, China companies want to come to use us, and they want to build a distribution center of manufacturers so that if they, if they have a final assembly stage in America, it will be labeled "Made in USA." So there's a lot of incentive. So I think we should make a trip, outbound trip to Shandong.
You paying, buying tickets?
Well, I mean, we have, we have the time. You know, as a matter of, as a matter of fact, I mean, I'm not asking for this city to reimburse for my trip because I'm very passionate about, about, about this. And, and the fact that you appointed me to be, to serve on economic development, so I think it's, it's a responsibility, it's an obligation, and I was happy to do it.
It'll, it'll pay off one of these days.
Yes, thank you.
Takes time, but I think we're growing fast enough, and our, you know, our reputation's getting out there as we want to do business, so. Very good. Well, thank you for bringing us up to speed on both of those visits. I thought they were very good. All right, Councilmember Marshall.
All right.
You got a report on the HDAC?
Yeah, at the November Houston-Gowasdenary Council Board Meeting, one of the items that was voted on and approved were fiscal year 13 solid waste management grants, in which the council had $171,000 in funding from the TCEQ for those grants. These were intended for projects that will directly and measurably reduce the amount of waste going into landfills or being dumped illegally. And while only having $171,000, the HDAC received 13 applications totaling $380,000. So as usual, not everything was able to be funded. But fortunately, Missouri City was one of those that received funding that we approved for a BOPA event. That's Batteries, Oil, Paint, and Antifreeze recycling event. So happy to report Missouri City received some funding and will be able to do that in.
It'll be in spring.
Spring.
That's my report.
That's very good. How much did we get?
$17,500. Each, each entity received about 10% of the total.
For the event and the, and the eventual.
Disposal of.
Disposal of those events.
Exactly.
And what we have.
So we may, especially with.
Batteries, tires, what else did you say? Batteries, tires.
Batteries, oil, paint, and antifreeze.
And so we're collecting that. We'll probably try to tie some other things. I know one of the things we really want to do is.
Maybe spring clean?
Well, there's that, but also some type of computer hardware type of collection, e-waste collection of that as well.
A lot of people ask about that, and we need to do that probably as soon after year end as possible because.
Places those TVs and computers.
That's right, one of the best things, one of the best gifts that people get are new TVs, new computers, all that kind of stuff. And they end up in the trash can where they shouldn't be. So we need to think about that part being fairly quickly. The other piece, high around spring clean, maybe.
In some, as far as retail outlets will actually let you bring back the television, they'll recycle it. And we'll check, we'll check on that and start to advertise that if that's possible. If there's anyone, the local places that will take the TVs.
TVs, there's monitors, there's all kinds of stuff, cell phones.
I was there.
Do we have a closed session now?
There is now.
Oh, we through there.
You ready to go, Jerry?
Yeah, I think it's time to go. I think they're all going too.